At 7:00 PM, November 14, 2016, I'm going to call the regular common council meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Oh, we have Mallory here for the youth report. Come on, Mallory.
Hello. At the high school, the U.S. Army can deploy troops and vehicles around the globe in a matter of days. Recently, the Army invaded the faculty parking lot at PJHS with its state-of-the-art adventure semi. The Port Jervis High School National Honor Society is participating in a local effort to collect new shoes for the Koochur Kids Shoe Drive. Everyone can donate new shoes at the shoe collection box in any school or main office. Financial donations can also be made. Hundred percent of your donations will go to the purchase of new shoes. The shoe drive is being sponsored by the Tri-State Chamber of Congress. PJHS junior class and student council are once again sponsoring the Majestic Theater and Mattamore's Discount Movie Ticket fundraiser. Tickets are $8 and they are good for anytime and any movie. You can also buy a voucher for small popcorn for $3. Tickets and popcorn vouchers can be purchased from the high school main office or the students from November 7 through November 28. Thank you for your support. The Port Jervis High School Guidance Department hosted the annual College and Career Week. Events include College and Career Fair Wednesday, November 2. Over 100 colleges and careers attended. At the middle school, middle school yearbooks are now on sale. If you order the book online until January 27, the cost will be $16.33. If you opt to add personalization to the yearbook cover, it would... If you would like to send in your order to school, the cost will be $18. All checks should be payable to Port Jervis Middle School. Place your orders through the district website. At the elementary schools, the HBE Family Fun Night was held on Friday, October 28. The PTA hosted trick-or-treating through the school. Students were dressed in their costumes and went trick-or-treating down the hallways. There's also pumpkin painting. Every child received a five-pound pumpkin to paint and bring home. Sixty-five ASK girls in grades four through six participated in the intramural basketball program. Program was coached by Nicole Bean, JV girls' basketball coach, and some of the JV and varsity girls' basketball players. The program focused on quality basketball instruction in a positive and fun environment. It focused on individual skills including dribbling, shooting, passing, defensive skills, and much more. The girls gained game knowledge and experience. By the end, they played full games, which helped teach basketball fundamentals. Port Jervis City's... Port Jervis School District is teaming up with Eat Smart New York and Shop Right to nourish your neighbor by collecting nutritious food for local families in need. We know that when donating to hungry families, it's important to choose foods that will not only fill them up, but nourish them with options that will support their overall health and well-being. A shopping cart will be placed in every school's main office to be donated... to place any donated food. There's a school board meeting tomorrow at 7:00 at the high school. And finally, next week, ASK and HBE will have half-days of school on Monday, Tuesday. Both days are 11:00 dismissal for parent-teacher conferences. The middle and high schools have a half-day on Tuesday with 10:00 dismissal for parent-teacher conferences also. There's no school next Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday for Thanksgiving break. I hope you all have wonderful Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mallory. Great job. Senior report, Mr. Siegel?
I do have a news release that was passed on by Mrs. Wasenager, and I just want to read part of it. It's about Social Security and veterans. "Social Security and Veterans Affairs Partnership Means Faster Disability Decisions for Veterans." The Social Security Administration announces the launch of a new Health IT initiative with the Department of Veterans Affairs, or the VA. That enables all Social Security disability case processing sites to receive medical records electronically from all VA facilities. Veterans will receive a faster decision on their Social Security disability claim, speeding them up and their dependence through this new process. Both agencies... Excuse me again. Will save time and money with an automatic request through the e-Health Exchange. To learn... And there's more about that, but to learn more about Health IT, And I'll post that on my Facebook page and get the word out. But that's a good opportunity to, I think, the future of the health in the VA is to merge things, and this is a good start. And that's all I have. Mayor, thanks.
Anything on veterans?
That was sort of veterans.
Okay, yeah, what's veterans? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I now open the floor to the public hearing. This is the 2017 budget. If anybody would like to come up and speak in regards to the 2017 budget, may do so now at this time. Just state your name and the ward you live in, please.
Okay. My name is Brianna Parsons. I live in the 4th ward. Question. This comes from the 2nd ward as well. Earlier this month, Kyle Van Horn was quoted in the record as saying that he'd be open to foregoing his stipend and recommending that the council do so. Has anyone on the council considered this? And Kyle, have you considered this in favor? Also, congratulations to everyone who won in the recent election.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Not hearing any? Do we want to make a motion to keep this public hearing open until you come to your resolution?
Aye.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Belcher, second by Ms. Troby, to keep the public hearing open. Thank you. We don't have any presentations for tonight. What's that? Oh, yeah, it'd help, wouldn't it? All in favor? Opposed? So carry. Thank you. We don't have presentation... Public comment during regular session. Anybody has a public comment, please come up to the podium. Five-minute limit. Just state your name and the ward that you live in, please, or the town that you live in. I haven't done anything. I've been tied up with other things. I apologize, but I just haven't gotten up to it. I would hope in the next two weeks.
I'm going in the next week. Yeah. I'm going to leave and I'm going to go probably for a month or month and a half.
Okay. Yeah, I'll get with you in the next two months. Or two weeks, I'm sorry, two weeks.
If half the people would go at one time, you know, two or three.
Right. Well, I'm going to meet you up there so we can go over it also.
Just you?
Initially, yes. Because I don't want to bring the council up for 100 million questions and as long as you're... You know, you're kind of... We're all kind of on the same page and then we have them come up, or if they can come up.
In the executive session, did you decide that you are going to sell the property?
No, we didn't. There were no decisions. That's doubtful. Okay?
I will go anytime.
Yes.
With his permission.
Can we get one more second count? Third ward person to go?
Sure.
I'll go, you can already have a message.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else in the public? I'm sorry.
A group of activists in Port Jervis are going out to the Standing Rock Reservation and just wanted to make an announcement that they are taking donations of non-perishable food items, water, socks, hats, clothing. They're going December 1st to 8th. And if anyone has any question or information? They're water protectors. They're usually working on Delaware projects, the river, Delaware River. They're going out to the Standing Rock Reservation where the water is being endangered by a pipeline.
Is that north of us or south of us?
North Dakota.
Oh, it's where?
It's in North Dakota, so...
Oh, okay.
It's just a...
West of us. Far west, far west of us.
Yes, it is a hard west.
Definitely not the Delaware.
Definitely not the Delaware, but that is their usual activism area.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Not hearing any? I'll entertain a motion to approve the October 24 common council minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Roboso, second by Mr. Foster. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carry. Committee reports, finance and insurance. Ms. Troby?
Okay. The finance committee has not met since the last common council meeting, but we have had several budget workshops to discuss the proposed 2017 budget. We have not come up with a final budget to present, which is why the public hearing is still open. Some things that we have done right now, the budget went from 7.71 to 6.66. This includes...
Triple six. That needs to be changed.
We're going to hope it'll go lower. This includes the cut of the 2% salary increases for council members. We're still discussing, to get back to you. A reduction in CDA contract by $30,000. Unfortunately, there was an increase in night shift health insurance benefit rates by $30,000, so that voided that out. And they proposed the elimination of band interest in the amount of $49,800 and some other minor line items. We still have much to discuss. Our next budget workshop is this Wednesday at 6:00. It's open to the public if anyone wants to come. And after the budget workshop will be our finance meeting at approximately 6:45. I have some resolutions that we need to go over. Orange County Youth Bureau funding, whereas the city of Port Jervis is desirous of having a youth recreation program and juvenile aid bureau services. And the city of Port Jervis is to help provide services and support to our youth. And whereas the city of Port Jervis has been awarded funding of $19,713 for the Port Jervis Youth Center and $5,400 for the Juvenile Aid Bureau from the Orange County Youth Development Program funding towards the operation of these programs for the year 2017. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the common council of the city of Port Jervis accepts the proposed funding as outlined and authorizes the mayor, Kelly Decker, to execute an agreement on behalf of the city of Port Jervis with respect to any awarded funding and forward same to the Orange County Youth Bureau for implementation in the year 2017. I'd like to make that a motion.
I have a motion by Ms. Troby. Do you have a second? Second by Mr. Siegel. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carries.
Okay. Resolution of the common council regarding USDA loan funding. Whereas the city of Port Jervis common council recognizes the need to finalize and close loans with the USDA for the Water Clarifier System on or about December 1, 2016. It is hereby resolved that the common council of the city of Port Jervis authorizes the city clerk treasurer, Robin Wasenager, and/or the mayor, Kelly Decker, to execute all documents necessary for the USDA loan in the amount of $4,120,000, which in addition to USDA grant funds are being used to fund the total project previously approved on July 14, 2014 of $4,363,000. Make that a motion?
I motion, Ms. Troby, second by Mr. Roboso. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carries.
Okay. Another resolution regarding USDA loan funding. Whereas the city of Port Jervis common council recognizes the need to finalize and close loans with the USDA for the Water Clarifier System on or about December 1, 2016. And whereas the budget for the project requires modification to reflect the actual expenditures, it's hereby resolved that the common council of the city of Port Jervis authorizes the following budget modification, which nets to zero to enable the maximization of funding with the USDA for the total project cost of $4,363,000 previously approved on July 14, 2014. Make that a motion?
I have a motion by Ms. Troby, second by Mr. Roboso. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carries.
And I believe that's it for me.
No.
I was hoping we'd get away without paying bills. I was wrong. All right. There are bills to pay. All right. I'll do the bills first. All right. General fund, $102,931.20. Water fund, $14,139.04. Capital fund, $128,370.78 for a total of $245,441.20. Some of the larger bills. Teneral and water funds. Orange and Rockland, October utilities, $21,735.26. Direct energy, October usage, $7,210.56. Tri-state emergency lighting for radio installation, $6,000. From the capital fund, board pavement for street paving, $99,685.76. Busco engineering for dam assessments, $9,115. The Gruyhauser-Edsel Engineering for Jersey Sewer, $7,200. I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
I have a motion by Ms. Troby, second by Mr. Roboso. Pay the bills. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carries.
And a resolution of the common council regarding 2017 holiday schedule. Whereas the city of Port Jervis common council has recognized the need to schedule holidays in coordination with its existing labor contracts, it is hereby resolved that the common council of the city of Port Jervis approves the following schedule for observed holidays for 2017 and that the city offices other than police and water production services will be closed on these days as follows. Do I need to read them?
It's up to you.
All right. Monday, January 2, New Year's Day. Monday, January 16, Dr. Martin Luther King Day. Monday, February 20, President's Day. Monday, May 29, Memorial Day. Tuesday, July 4, Independence Day. Monday, September 4, Labor Day. Monday, October 9, Columbus Day. Friday, November 10 for Veterans Day. Thursday, November... Thursday and Friday, November 23 and 24 for Thanksgiving and the day after Thanksgiving. Friday, December 22, half-day for Christmas Eve. Monday, December 25 for Christmas Day. Friday, half-day for... Friday, December 29, half-day for New Year's Eve. Make that a motion?
Second. Motion by Ms. Troby, second by Mr. Roboso on a resolution for 2017 holiday schedule. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carries.
I think I'm done now.
All right. Fire and Emergency Management, Mr. Siegel?
Thank you, Mayor. We have some correspondence from the department secretary. Honorable Mayor Kelly B. Decker, member of the city council. Nomination of active membership, Jonathan Ross. Dear Mayor Decker, member of the city council, it is hereby requested that the blow name person be approved for active membership into the Port Jervis Fire Department in the company stated. Jonathan Ross, Howard Weaking Company Number 4. The members and board of officers of Port Jervis Fire Department approved this application on 11/7/2016 and by the prospective member's company on the date as stated on the individual's application. And I'll note that Jonathan is our chaplain and he will go on to take firefighting courses, become an active firefighter as well. I make a motion to accept that.
Second. Motion by Mr. Siegel, second by Mr. Roboso to approve Jonathan Ross for discussion.
I'm sorry?
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carries.
Okay, this one, I promised I would say his name properly this time. Interdepartmental transfer of Mark J.
He's watching.
Cavelli.
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 Right, that's what he said.
Yeah.
He told us, Dan.
Dear Mayor Decker and members of city councils, hereby requested that the blow name firefighter be approved for an interdepartmental transfer as stated. Mark J. Cavelli from Fowler Rescue and Salvage Company Number 3 to Neversink Engine Company Number 1. I have no idea how. I have so much trouble with one name. He's reported to have cleared all obligations to Fowler Rescue and Salvage Company Number 3. The members of the board of officers of Port Jervis Fire Department approved this request on today's date. Respectfully submitted, Bill Warner, I make a motion to accept that.
Second. Motion by Mr. Siegel, second by Mr. Roboso to allow for the transfer of Mark Cavelli. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carries.
Thank you. Interdepartmental transfer, Megan L. Metzger. Dear Mayor Decker, member of the city council, it is hereby requested that the blow name firefighter be approved for interdepartmental transfer as stated. Megan L. Metzger from Fowler Rescue and Salvage Company Number 3 to Delaware Engine Company Number 2. Firefighter Metzger is reported to have cleared all obligations to Fowler Rescue and Salvage Company Number 3. The members of the board of officers of Port Jervis Fire Department approved this request on today's date, and those dates are all the 7th of November. I make a motion to accept that.
Second. Motion by Mr. Siegel, second by Mr. Roboso for Megan Metzger. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carries.
Thank you. Interdepartmental transfer, Michael R. Jurgensen. Dear Mayor Decker and members of city council, it is requested that the blow name firefighter be approved for interdepartmental transfer as stated. Michael R. Jurgensen from Tri-State's Hose Company Number 6 to Neversink Engine Company Number 1. Firefighter Jurgensen is reported to have cleared all obligations to Fowler... No, that would be to Tri-State Hose Company Number 6. The members of board of officers of Port Jervis Fire Department approved this request on today's date, which is November 7. I make a motion to accept that one as well.
Motion by Mr. Siegel, second by Mr. Belcher for Mr. Jurgensen. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carries.
The chief asked me to bring this to everyone's attention, and I posted it on my Facebook page. And it's there for those that want to see it. There's a program coming to the hub at the Port Jervis Library on November 17, which is this Thursday. It's from 6:30 to 8:00 PM, and it's in the reference room of the library. It's presented by Chris Edwards. The cost of the program is free. And Chris Edwards served with FDNY for 17 years. He was a member of Engine 42 and Engine 81 in the Bronx. He was also first responder during the tragedies that surround the September 11, 2001 terrorist attack on the World Trade Center in Manhattan. He's currently members of several different disaster teams. He's a big proponent of giving back to all those who helped in September 11, 2001 attack. And his new book, Coming Through the Flames, which he's going to talk about, is a memoir dedicated to his children, some of whom did not get to see their dad as a fireman since he retired from the... Before their birth. There also will be cider and donuts for those people that attend.
Yeah, he'll be here.
I can't have cider or donuts, so that won't drag me down.
Well, that's what you tell Sharon, because she's watching, right?
You know, you're giving it all away, Kelly. Chris will recount some... Recount some of the tragedies that he faced throughout his career in FDNY. And I think it would be a very good program for those that want to attend. You don't have to be a firefighter, I think, to get something out of this. So again, it's November 17. It's Thursday from 6:30 to 8:00 PM at the library in the reference room. And the next meeting of the Fire Mercy Management Meeting, scheduled for Monday, the 21st, has been canceled. The next meeting will be December 19. And watch our Facebook page, Port Jervis Fire Department, and our webpage, PJNYFD.com, for more information about the Port Jervis Fire Department. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Code and Legislative, Mr. Roboso?
Thank you, Mayor. The code committee last met on November 2. There are three items I'd like to bring to the council. I previously emailed copies of all of these items. The first is I would make a motion to set a public hearing for Local Law Number 15 of 2016, allowing the common council to waive fees which have previously been set, established, or amended by the common council. Before I ask for a second, I just want to give a brief description. This is a local law that in certain parts of the city code as it exists right now, any fees or any requirements, particularly fees, I'm sorry, can only be permitted to be waived by that specific section. And in some cases, it can be rigid. So what this local law seeks to do is take into account the entire fee system for the city of Port Jervis and allow the common council to be able to waive a fee if it finds an appropriate situation to do so. Bear in mind, this isn't just... Isn't intended to be just so a fee can be waived whenever it seems fun to do so. But a situation that was brought to our attention by the building inspector at the code committee meeting was after a natural disaster, if people are trying to repair their homes, it may be appropriate for the common council to waive. it may be appropriate for the common council to waive a building permit fee or some other inspection fee or something like that that someone may not be able to, to afford.